The meeting order. I got one announcement. I got a call from Donnie Willhite. He retired from the fire department six years ago. His father, Don Willhite, been in this community forever. He always called me and we talked for hours sometimes it seemed like. Nice gentleman. Anyway, he passed away Sunday. And he said it's hard to tell everybody about him because he knew so many people. But anyway, the visitation is Thursday from five to seven at Boone. And the funeral is at Boone Friday at 11 o'clock. So first we have an invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Chris Smith. Would you please stand?
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for all of the blessings that you have bestowed on Bossier City. Lord, we pray for the Willhite family as they mourn their loss. Lord, we pray that they have peace and comfort during this time of loss. Lord, we pray for all of those affected by recent hurricanes, Lord. And Lord, we pray for people affected by COVID and for continued progress against the pandemic. Lord, we pray for wisdom for our state, for our nation, and for us at this city council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
All present. Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. And if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you're asked to please step out of the meeting. City council-appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
We'll approve the minutes of the September 8, 2021 regular council meeting. So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, do you have any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Counsel, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda today.
All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve today's agenda. So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
We don't have any ceremonial matters.
No, sir.
So we have next is bids.
Yes, sir. Bids. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P21-13, the 2021 striping project.
Good afternoon, counsel. There was two addendums to this bid. The first one included the list of the attendees at the mandatory meeting revised to the bid form to include the parking lot at the municipal complex. And the second addendum was to postpone the bid from the September 7 scheduled meeting to today. The engineer's estimate for this project is $250,000. Our first and only bid for this is Nation Service Company, Inc. They have acknowledged the addendums. Their bid bond is included. That bid is for $237,795. That's 237,795.00. I ask that you approve the reading of the bid.
So move.
Second.
Are there any questions from the audience on this? Any questions from the council? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P21-15, Shady Grove and Rome Street Lift Station Rehabilitation Project.
Counsel, there was one addendum to this project. It included the list of attendees at the mandatory meeting, changes to specs in the documents, changes to drawings, and answering questions. The engineer estimate is $464,000. Our first bid is from Axis Construction LLC. The addendum has been acknowledged. Bid bond is included. That amount is for $447,000. That's 447,000.00. The next bid is from JPD Construction LLC. The addendum has been acknowledged. The bid bond is included. It is for $668,000. That's 668,000.00. Our last bid is from Pooley Construction. The addendum has been acknowledged. Bid bond is included. That is for $572,000. That's 572,000.00. I ask that you approve the reading of the bids.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P21-14, South Bossier Redevelopment Project.
Counsel, there was one addendum to the project. It included the list of attendees at the pre-mandatory meeting, revision to the bid form to include alternate. The engineer's estimate for that is $2,869,801. There's only one bid for this. It is for Boxpool Contracting Group. Addendum has been acknowledged. The base bid for this is $2,348,000 with an alternate of $418,000. Their bid bond is included. That base bid is 2348,000.00 with the alternate of 418,000.00. I ask for the approval of the bid.
So move.
Second.
All right, any questions from the audience? From the council? Please cast your vote.
Phyllis, there was an alternate for this striping project that I forgot to let y'all know. I'm sorry about that. If you can write, that is for $298,636.
Do you want to just go back and vote on that again? We'll clear out the first vote.
Okay. So read it number again, please.
$298,636. That's 298,636.00. And it's an alternate on the striping project.
Make the motion that we add the alternate for the striping project.
Second.
All right, counsel, we're going to re-vote. Is there any questions from the audience about this? Counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And motion carries as well on the South Bossier redevelopment, in case I didn't announce that one.
Finish your business.
Adopting ordinance to re-appropriate $20,000 from Fund 497, the 2017 sales tax bond innovation drive for the preparation of a traffic study at Old Brownlee Road at Wimpel Road. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? From the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance, amending ordinance 59 of 2021, changing the title from dispatcher to utility worker for the Public Utilities Department. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the council? I mean, from the audience? Counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance, amending resolution number 41 of 2020, authorizing the replacement of an industrial waste inspector in the Environmental Affairs Division in Public Utilities due to a transfer. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? From the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to approve report of change order number three for the LTRI, the Louisiana Technical Technology Research Institute Bossier, with an increase in project cost of $114,177.05 from the 2016 sales tax bond issue. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? From the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance requiring the risk manager for the city of Bossier City be under the supervision of the city attorney. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to fund the replacement of the baffle curtain at the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant at a cost of $30,000 to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? From the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance prohibiting the city of Bossier City from entering into contractual agreements pending the installation of a new city administration. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Tommy Chandler to execute the attached memorandum of understanding between the city of Bossier City and the Bossier Parish School Board for the cost sharing of crossing guards utilized throughout Bossier City. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? From the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business. Introducing ordinance to purchase and upgrade for the water department's customer service current billing software at a cost of $47,000 to come from the water contingency fund. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to fund replacement of the Coleman Street Sewer Main at a cost of $30,000 to come from the sewer contingency fund and to enter into a contract with law or construction. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? From the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to establish the Brookshire Grocery Arena Region. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Scott can take it.
Do what?
I think he made the motion.
I have him down and Mr. Smith as the second.
Okay. Rebecca, would you like to say anything about this for Charles? Either one?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We are requesting permission to have a special region zone so that we're able to sell and serve alcohol for certain events such as festivals and things like that. And that's what we're requesting to do.
Okay. Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Thank you, Rebecca. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing and approving the engagement of Vingham Arbitrage Rebate Services, Inc. to provide professional arbitrage rebate services to the city of Bossier City. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for improvements to the Bossier Arts Council Building for a total of $500,000 to come from the Hotel Motel Fund. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? From the council?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
What type of improvements can we anticipate?
The building as it stands now is leaking from the brick. The old bricks, I don't know. I guess that building was built in the '30s, somewhere around there, late '30s or whatever. And the request was to have all of that checked and sealed so that it will not allow the moisture penetration that's occurring to come into the building and also to continue that brick facade around the metal so that that protects that on one for the future as well. Plus, it presents itself as, help me out, Ben, an architectural sustain- or, oh, there's Mike, never mind, I'm sorry. I just looked out there. They have a word for it, Mr. Darby.
The aesthetics.
Yeah.
To improve it aesthetically.
Yeah, come up, Mike, if you don't mind, I'm sorry. And what we were looking for is, we have some people, Berkshire Hathaway One fixing to invest a tremendous amount of money in a four-story building right across the street. And from a standpoint of what we want to present in that East Bank area, it makes the building contiguous in a constant presentation. Go ahead, you take over. I don't need to get to that.
Please bear him out.
I think you nailed it. But it takes the metal building siding that's on one half of the building and puts a brick around it. So it presents itself as one whole building and not a metal building and a brick building. Is basically what this is.
How did the number 500,000 projected, how did that?
We ran a scope on it and then ran a detailed estimate of what we anticipated the cost would be for that.
Does that include your services?
Yes, sir.
And it will be bid out.
Correct.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. All right, now, so do we have any questions from the audience? Any from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for improvements to the left turn lanes located at Highway 3 and Interstate Highway 220 for a total of $450,000 to come from the Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Ben, you want to talk about that one?
Sure.
Because you didn't want to talk about the last one?
This is, this particular issue is really to support what the Bossier Parish Police Jury is doing. They've been quarterbacking this project, which is specific to corridor enhancements, capacity enhancements right there at the I-220 corridor of Benton Road. They've been working on this for a while. They have asked the city of Bossier to contribute in costs for that, 50%. And then we've added a little money in there contingency-wise to make sure that when that capacity improvement project is complete, that any signaling modifications that are required, both on the north and south side of the intersection there are handled.
Any questions, counsel?
So Ben, Patrick, is you referring to Jackson on here? That's the name?
That's Clinton Patrick.
Clint.
Clint, Clint Patrick, okay. Not the police jury person.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached alcoholic beverage concession contract between the Bossier Civic Center and Thrifty Liquor. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience?
Seconded that.
Ben. Vince. Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to acquire property on behalf of the city of Bossier and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof for any city, state, or federal road and utility projects. First reading.
So move.
Second. Can we talk about this for a little bit?
Sure.
What is?
It's a blanket ordinance that allows the mayor for these particular projects to go ahead and to sign, you know, any type of contract or conveyance, allowing him to acquire property, you know, for any of these type of specific projects without having to go back and forth between the council to get that authority. It's just basically replacing Mayor Walker's name with Mayor Chandler's name.
So this is in place that the mayor could buy property without coming to the council?
Well, he'd still have to get council approval for each specific piece of property.
That's what I mean that.
But it wouldn't require a specific ordinance for each specific piece of property. You could do it by resolution instead of by ordinance.
I'll vote to introduce this, but I'd like to have a meeting and what other two councilmen that'd like to join me. We'd just sit down with the mayor and you. And I'd like to understand this a little more going forward. But I'll certainly vote to introduce it today.
Any other questions, counsel? Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing the release of the full sum of $3,292,274 from the shuttered venues, shuttered venue operators grant. First reading.
So move.
Second.
I think we talked about this a little bit last week. Charles, anything else you want to say on that?
No, it's just going to allow, that's money that was made available by the federal government due to the COVID crisis and these venues that had suffered a loss of income due to the lack of events. It's the city's facility, the city, there's a list of renovations, not repairs, maintenance, you know, project improvements. We do have to be, I talked with Mr. Roshenbach this morning about it. We do have to be under contract by the end of the year. So we're going to have to get, Mr. Roshenbach is getting a project engineer together to do any sort of design work that needs to be done, any sort of architectural drawings that need to be done. Once that is complete, then we'll go ahead and put it out for bids.
Mr. Jacobs, didn't we say we were going to, the city was going to hold the money and then pay out as necessary and not just release the?
That is correct. Because if we were.
Is that worded in this?
We are allowed to transfer the money to ASM Global. But speaking with Ms. Bonavir in ASM Global, were we to do that, that would create a taxable event.
Right.
To ASM Global. So the full $3.2 million could not be spent on those projects, renovations, works, materials, whatever. And so the most economic way to facilitate the funding of these various projects and to save money on taxes would be for the city to administer that money.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that's what we were voting on.
Yes, sir. That's what the ordinance is.
Basically an appropriation, correct?
Correct.
It's just appropriating the money. It's not worded that way, but it's.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask, we talked about portion of this would be used for debt services. Is that, was that my understanding?
Yes, we, in the past, excuse me, I don't want to.
Go ahead.
We had been using monies from the bond to pay the debt service because we had a lack of events. And if you'll recall, we had passed originally for the seven and a half, eight million dollar bond issue, a $3 ticket fee. Well, naturally, we've not collected that. So we've had to use the actual monies, the bonds, to pay for the debt service. Well, in this shuttered venue operations grant, it allows us to utilize a portion of that money to go back and reimburse ourselves for the debt service that we've extended to the bonds.
So writing the check to the management, how do we get that money out of that check? You know, because we said that the total amount, 3.2, is going to the management company.
No, it is not going to the management company.
It's not going to the management company.
It will be kept in the city coffers and be spent by the city.
Okay.
And managed by the city.
Okay.
And also bid by the city, correct?
Yeah, that makes sense because once you give it out, I can get it back.
It will be Mr. Darby in a city bank account.
Okay, okay. Good to know.
Any question? Yes, sir, Mr. Ben.
I just wanted to add real quick, because I shared some of your questions with both Rebecca and Attorney Jacobs. So we'll have another ordinance next council meeting that's going to appropriate a portion of that money for the design and construction. And our intent is to do that on an emergency measure because we don't have a lot of time between now and the end of the year to get that spent within the deadlines required. So stay tuned for that. She's already sent me some information this afternoon. I'm working on that. So we'll be ready to go for the 5th and then get to work on it.
And if we're not under contract by the end of the year, we have to give the money back.
So how would management get the renovation inside? Because is that going to be on the contract to do that?
Yeah, come on.
Because that's a part of your projection of using this money.
Yes, sir. Actually, the city applied for the grant. And so this amount of money came in. And one of the rules is that it has to be spent by December 31st. So what this is asking for is that that lump of money be spent as per the way ASM is recommending. So there's never, there's no money that's coming to ASM at all. It's more, we put together the budget of what we are recommending that it be spent on. So no check is written to ASM Global. It's just to be spent on the projects as per our recommendation. And as an example, and I think you talked about it a minute ago for the Arts Council Building, but we're having water enter the building because the caulking where the concrete meets is dry rotted after 22 years. So there's a large lump sum of that going into what kind of weatherproofing, the building. Another example is seats. We were able to, the city was able to invest in replacing some seats in the past, but seats are 22 years old. So a large lump sum of that is going to replace seating in the venue. So those are the types of things that we recommended. And then. those are the types of things that we recommended. And then we will be working with the city purchasing department. The city will purchase everything. It will all, no money will come to ASM Global at all. It's just us, you know, giving information as to the types of things that are needed. And we actually had to work with the city in applying for the money. We had to submit a budget as to what type of things they would be spent on. So these are the, the items on the budget are all in compliance with what was required when we applied for that grant.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, I, I think you're saying that you have a punch list, and that punch list is what's going to be taken care of with that facility.
And then the city will actually be doing all of the purchasing and things like that.
Sure.
Yes, sir. It's, they're all city assets.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Montgomery and myself, we, we went down there several months ago when this, we talked about this. She walked around and showed us a lot of things that need to be fixed, so that's where the list came from.
Okay.
And of course, she had some of her own, I'm sure.
Sure, sure. Okay, great.
And I think we'd also asked if there is any needs to do the repair work or replacement work to a hundred percent, to please let us know to see if we can find the additional funds-
Yes, sir.
-to go ahead and make sure a hundred percent of what's needed is done.
Yes, sir.
To protect the, and structural integrity of the building.
Yes, sir. And, and in addition, I think the ordinance says that if there were any extra funds, that it would be reinvested into the arena, because if it's not spent or allocated with a purchase order to be spent by December 31st, we have to give the money back to the government. And so a lot of these items are estimated budgets, so if for some reason something comes in under, and there's, you know, some sort of leftover monies for, back of letter, better terminology, then that money would be reinvested into the arena rather than having to return it back to the government. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
More questions, counsel? Rebecca's up there.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? My counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing positions to be filled in the Bossier City Engineering Department as a result of a retirement and promotion resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, counsel?
Yeah, I, I do have one question. On the fact sheet for this ordinance, it shows where we're paying the, the new engineering A four and what's gonna be the engineering A three, slightly different salary. And then I think the language says there'll be, that, that extra money will be used for a part-time office worker. However, hiring a part-time office worker is not part of this. Does the engineering department plan to come back to ask for a part-time office person, or?
No, the, the intent of this measure is to promote from within into the vacated position and then fill that open slot, which is currently a, an inspector to fill that open slot. It'll actually be a little less money budgetary-wise once those two positions are filled.
Right, right, yeah. I just saw this last line that said this will create eleven thousand and some change in salary that can be used to hire a temporary office worker. But then in the actual text, I didn't see that, so I was just curious if that was maybe a plan.
Might be a typo.
Typo, okay.
But we're not, we don't have any intent to hire any temporary off, we, we have property standards as a temporary worker there that's currently working for us, doing a great job.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a typo or something. All right, I'm good.
And just, maybe Chris doesn't know this, but the lady we have up there that's worked for you, she was doing property standards and engineering also, and really was getting a lot, way too much, you know, so that's why they got one of them.
Temp worker, we, we just filled that position, and the, the new employee there is doing very, very good. We're, we're happy to have that support there. Helps a lot.
Good. Thank you, Ben.
I'm good.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
There was a little delay there.
Slow like you.
The thunder scared it. Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker for the Red River Treatment Plant in the Public Utilities Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Ben, this was just a vacant position?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing a promotion from within due to resignation of the tax audit supervisor and to hire a replacement sales tax auditor in the sales tax department resulting in a net neutral change to the operating bud, budget. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
We had a, in case you didn't know, we had a couple of people in that office leave-
Three.
Pretty quickly. Yeah, three left one day. So anyway, that's what this is for, to replace those people.
Any questions from the council? From the council, the audience? I'm sorry. Counsel, please cast your vote.
And actually, this one replaces two, and then there's another one that replaces, the next one also replaces one. They, they did them separately.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a tax auditor due to a resignation in the sales tax department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution nominating for confirmation by the Bossier City Council Wade L. Rich as the city's director of public works. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Wade, would you like to come up and say anything? First, first of all, I want to say I'm glad the mayor done that drug you back, okay?
Good afternoon. I, I want to thank the, thank the Mayor Chandler and thank the counsel and looking forward to getting to work with everyone.
And believe me, we're looking forward to get to work too, as you, as you know.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say, sir, it's good to see you. This is my first time ever seeing you. I know we, we've had opportunities to meet in the mayor's office, but I was never at any of those meetings, but I can see you now. Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you. Glad to be here. Thank you.
Counsel, excuse me, counsel, any questions? Any?
Tommy has something he wants to say.
I was gonna ask-
Let's get him voted in first.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Any questions from the audience?
Hey, this has been a long-going thing with, with Wade, as we all know. Counsel, please-
I think we ought to, what is that song, Welcome Back Cotter? We could play that, Phyllis, real quick.
Why don't you just sing it for us?
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I know you want to say something.
I want to say thank you, you know, President, and all the councilmen that show that, show the citizens that we can work together and get a great, man, I have all my confidence in this guy, and each one of y'all know how I've praised, praised him all these times. And to get him into that position, and he's gonna do an outstanding job, and if, if he's voted in now, he's on the clock, so we need to hurry up and get out so I can get to work.
Tommy, can you say one more time, we, we work together? Is that what you said?
All the citizens, we, we work together to get him in, yeah.
Oh, John's left already? Okay, I'm sorry.
We did vote all nationally, didn't we?
It was unanimous.
Oh, good, okay, good.
It was unanimous.
All right, we got some reports now. Ms., our finance director, Angela Williamson.
Good afternoon, counsel. Good afternoon, Mayor Chandler. You have before you the financials for the month ended August 31st, 2021. The first page is the revenue by fund report. The city's currently running twenty-one percent over budget. Gaming revenue dropped slightly during August, but still doing well. Sales tax is also doing well, up eight point eight percent compared to August of 2020. The month-to-month between years is becoming more comparable due to the effects of COVID beginning to level out around this time prior year. Page two is the expense by fund report. The city's currently running six percent under budget. The alternative fuel stations are notably over budget, but the revenue is as well at one hundred and thirty-five percent. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. As previously stated, sales tax revenue is up eight point eight percent compared to August 2020. Current year sales tax revenues are beginning to become more comparable with 2020, which was affected by COVID. Page four is the manning report. The city has eleven less employees than last month. The total employees as of August 31st, 2021 is six hundred and sixty-one. This is thirty-three employees below the budgeted total of six hundred and ninety-four. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for August 2021 is down six percent compared to August 2020. Current year-to-date net operating income is down seventeen percent compared to prior year and is below budget by fifteen percent. On a rolling twelve-month basis, current net operating income after debt service is eighty-one percent of the prior twelve months, or down nineteen percent. Are there any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Mr. Roshanbach?
And may I say, Ms. Williamson is doing an outstanding job.
Did you hire her?
I got it.
I think I found it.
Oh, I thought you did.
Good afternoon. Hey, I'm gonna try to give a quick update on all the things going on in the engineering department. Just kind of an overview here. Hundred and thirty-six million dollars in ongoing design and construction projects with a hundred and twenty-seven million into that in, in current construction as of speak. Got nine projects in design or bid, eighteen projects under construction, and seven subdivisions entering the construction phase. Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Phase One, that is complete, less some minor items we're working on with the contractor right now. It looks good out there, going well. Coleman Street, we're showing on here that they're a little behind. We talked to DOTD today. They confirmed they feel like those forty-seven working days, especially Traco, will be able to get the project complete. Currently working at McCormick and Coleman right now. So they're, they're making good progress out there.
Ben, let me ask you a question about that.
Sure.
There's a, that sewer line we just read, is that something they found while it was out there, or?
Yeah, we, we found quite a few things while we were out there. The sewer line that we, that was on the agenda was not on any documents that we could find, especially Traco was out there working in that intersection. It's a line that's coming from the old field house that comes out to McCormick. And actually, believe it or not, it goes all the way to Hamilton Road from there, and it was just too shallow for them. So we put a stronger material, it was old clay pipe. The plan was to strengthen that material out there, and then they'll be encapsulating that with their base and concrete as part of the final construction.
I know Principal Tharash will be glad when it's brought to us.
Yeah, we, right there where that picture's taken, we found where no one knew were Bossier Highs. We all thought their sewer went to the west, and it actually comes across about where that picture's taken. And they had no sewer service a couple weeks ago on a Friday, and we had to jump through some hoops to get that fixed. All that work was done internally. We fixed that, did all that work with, with the utility department staff. Streetscape Project Phase One is complete. It's looking good out there. The Tinsley Athletic Ball Field had a, had a good meeting this week, had quite a bit of support from Mr. Jacobs on that. We are told that completion will be, will happen November 15th. Is that correct?
That was stated in the meeting by the contractor.
We produced a list of action items, and I know that Mr. Jacobs has also talked to, to the construction firm as well, just putting a lot of pressure to get that done. Starting to take shape, but there's still a lot of little Mickey Mouse items that need attention. LTRI Buildings coming up. It's behind predominantly just weather, weather and more weather out there. East Bank Fire Station, they've broken ground out there. They're a little ahead of schedule. Clifford Almond Park, again, another one, project I think we're behind there primarily because of metal materials. We're working on a few change orders right now with them to upgrade. There's another lift station out there that we're working on, trying to tie these together, some old infrastructure, trying to get a couple of things done with that project, but they're getting close. The Street and Sidewalk Improvement Project, big win, lots of work happening out there. The picture down in the bottom is in Green Acres. You can kind of see, I think, the top left, that one is, or excuse me, top right is Michael's Street, and then you've got some sidewalks and other things going. Got a lot of work going on that project, keeping us very busy.
They finished that drainage out there on Michael's.
Yeah, I think there's a little more work that needs to be done out there. We're, we're working with them on that, but, but it's getting close. Private development, I won't go through all of those, but, but these private developers right now with residential development, commercial development, they call the office about a dozen times a day screaming to get things rolling so they can go to work. And just some various projects we have out to bid are in design. Highway 71 Lighting Project, we're calling Phase Two, south of the Jimmy Davis Bridge. That is in design. We actually sent some comments out today to get that off dead center and get, get it rolling. South Bossier Miscellaneous Capital Improvement Projects, bids were opened on that today. We've got design work going on the 71 South Turn Lane there at Golden Meadows. Tinsley Drainage Basin Improvements, the City Hall Parking Lot, Bardot and Montgomery Lane Drainage Improvements, and then Elm Grove Parkway Drive Drainage Improvements as well. Other things going on, signaling software upgrades, we've been talking about that for a while. Also looking at the measure that was passed today with Bossier Parish Police Jury there at Benton Road, and then the traffic study for US 71 South Benton Road and Airline. School traffic still, some would contend is not normal. If you've been around any of these schools during starting or ending times, you might disagree with that. It's pretty raunchy at most schools right now. Traffic issues with parents bringing their kids to school more so than they would during non-COVID-related issues, but we're working on those. Any questions?
You may or may not can answer this part. Going back to Tinsley Park, that contractor being behind, is there, is there a number that we have that it costs us, the fact that they're so far behind?
As far as what it's cost in the city, I believe that Mr. Bohan, I don't think he's here today, but they have worked up some rough costs of what that's, what, what kind of revenues we're losing for not having that park open, yes, sir. I don't, I can't speak to those, but, but that's been, that exercise has been-
Also, I mean, as far as men's, young, women's softball teams or whatever, it's been a lot, a lot of weakness.
I think there are.
Don't we have a bunch of tournaments scheduled for early next year?
February.
Yeah.
February of 2022, or when the first contracts for the tournament groups, the tournament teams, and various events are scheduled now to begin. The contractor stated when, that they anticipate being substantially complete by November 15th of 2021. If that does not happen, then we'll have to discuss other measures to have the project completed. The last thing you want to do is start off your premier facility by canceling contracts and giving money back, so.
Yeah, that, that, that would be a grave concern. Another concern would be that this contractor in the future would bring before this council any change orders. I mean, can you imagine that? We, we behind, and yet we may have changed orders because of whatever, whatever. That, that's going to be hard to, to justify. That that's going to be hard to to justify, you know, you know, that's, I was thinking about that.
Yeah, there will be at some point a measure to reconcile sometime. They've asked for a bunch and we've been in contact with the city's legal department on, you know, what is commensurate with the contract and what they've asked for. So you're going to see some of that come through. It doesn't get them to November fifteenth as far as their time, but they have asked for it. And some of that they're owed. I mean, there's been a lot of rain in their defense, but we're we're working through that right now.
Okay.
Are you still working on the second quarter days or did you finish those?
We have come to, we, the city of Bossier has come to a consensus on what we feel comfortable approving for second quarter.
Just haven't presented it, presented them to them yet.
We we haven't presented it to y'all yet, really is where we're at. We'll we'll put that together and get that on, but we 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 still are, you know, you got third quarter right now that we're working on, so.
Thank you, Ben.
Ben, on, I think it's Sun Sun Valley and Parkway, there is, I think they busted up the street there and it's doesn't look like any crews have been there. Do you know what's what's going on and what the?
Sun Valley and Parkway?
Sun, or not, not Parkway. Right there coming into your neighborhood, Scott, is that Sun Valley?
What what's the question?
I think goes to the right, don't it, right there, that little?
Right, mhm.
Yeah.
And Sun Valley and Venus, maybe, is the intersection.
Well, at at Sun Valley and Curtis Loop.
Curtis Loop.
Talking about the, there's a little square in the center of the road.
Yes.
We fixed it numerous times, but it has some another two inches, I think, so. It's just a, it's a little concrete square.
No, go ahead.
I know what you're talking about, Chris. That is at Sun Valley and Venus. We had a contractor there. We got into the catch basins in that area and found out that there was a little more work that needed to be done. Wanted to replace the catch basins while we were there. We've been waiting on the catch basin tops to come in. They came in early last, late last week.
That's right.
So they should be coming in to to fix that.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Glenn.
Yeah, thanks, Glenn.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Robyn? Any announcements?
Nothing.
Meeting adjourned.